They know what they are talking about. A lot of stuff is going on. My question is, I heard a whole lot of people, infrastructure, a lot of developments are going on. I didn't hear anything about blockchain area. Because if you look at the transformation, what is happening now? Okay, so what are we doing in this area to encourage, as you said, the young, the advanced commerce? For the follow-up. Thank you.
The question is blockchain.
The question I have is that, the company, that's with the African company, just listed on the new stock exchange. There is a place going back and forth.
Hi, from Jake.
Good evening, Honorable Ministers. First of all, congratulations on your appointment to the World Bank Development Committee. The question I have is that, a couple of days ago, a company listed on the new stock exchange, and it supports an African company, but there was a question asked. They apparently have 5,000 employees in Africa. But then somebody said, well, all your programmers are in Germany. So as we open up our economy and one day to one country, what goals are we putting in place to make sure that the people that actually get employed are not just people working in the warehouses, but they're actually programmers and architects that are actually raising our craft, for example, that are actually working and making a lot more money than perhaps somebody working in the warehouse. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jeremy Anderson. And this is a big call to Mr. Ove Grant, CEO of Ghana Investment Promotion Castle. Say, I would like to find out from you what your outfit has done so far. And also we have investors and potential investors here, walk us through what you can do for us. Thank you.
Good evening, General. My name is Jamie Johnson, retail management slash business person also. My question pertains to credit, the access to credit. We had the two ministers come up and speak of industrializing the nation and using agriculture to move it forward. That being the case, if I was to be a farmer in Ghana, what's available to me as a farmer to help me move that forward? In addition to that, as a business person, and if I ask for, I'm not asking for any handouts, what has been done, or what's on paper, what's been thought of to help me come back home?
Good evening, honorable gentlemen. My name is Janice Ansari, I'm a civil engineer. My question goes to the municipal plan. I mean, I would have a suggestion for you. The question for our perennial flat in the capital city. You have specific policies to address the flooding. And the suggestion for you would be, while flooding is an issue of runoff, why can't we have policies in place where in urban new construction, dedicated areas where we have localized runoffs, like previous statements, so we don't have to complete higher information and increase our impervious areas? Do you have policies like that in our system coming up?
Thank you. My name is Augustin Ajemaya. In 1998, I had the opportunity to listen to a very centenary team I was speaking by when I was a student at KUST. And I still believe that he has a golden heart. My, irrespective of whatever policy we have, I want to ask a question from my uncle, Professor John, that do we have a national policy with regard to honesty and integrity? I think that will be of our own. It doesn't matter the idleness of our president. The Bible says the problem that the good son builds by the foolish one will turn out. We go to Ghana today, the people that give money in churches and mosques are the same people stealing the country's money. I believe that there should be a national policy to bring call, gate, integrity and honesty, rather than primary school, maybe to the university. By the way, I tell my brother, the Deputy Director of Retirement and Transit is my mother.
Honorable gentlemen, thank you very much for your work. My name is Dr. Asavano Sambabwa. The question I have is that, building, development and infrastructure is tied to economic development. My question is, what is the government doing to ensure good compliance? So that our infrastructure, the buildings that are being built are well-built to attract investors, to ensure that the buildings are in order. Secondly, what are we paying for emergency preparedness? Because in case of any natural disaster, most of our infrastructure could be destroyed. That's my question. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Emmanuel Tegrey, I'm from Pennsylvania. My question, I had a statement before, my question. My question is very personal, in a sense that I'm a communications designer. You can call it, or it could fall under marketing, or propaganda, or public relations. When looking at the PR that we have for Ghana on international level, I feel like we could do something about it, from my point of view. But I don't know if the nation, or Ghana has any plans to do something about it. I can see something being done that could help out with tourism at the time. But I don't know if there are any plans, some of us would like to go home, you know, but looking at the way things are right now, I don't think there is a need to do that. My question is, my question is, my question is. My question is, what is being done about communications? In brand position.
My name is Prince Watin, thank you, Honorable Ministers. And first of all, I have to allude to what Senior Minister said earlier about training a Chinese lady to get something. It's done everywhere, in the United States. So I don't see anything wrong with that. My question, the other thing that he referred to was about the black market. And he said it's not Ghanaians. So if it's not Ghanaians, that means some people coming from the outside. So my specific question is, what is being done about immigration in Ghana? Does anybody come in and go out, whichever way you want?
Who else?
Specifically immigration, like Chinese immigration. Is the government doing anything about immigration? I know we have like who else and everything, but still, I believe something needs to happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So blockchain, how do we get programmers and architects? What is GIPC, what is GIPC done? Access to credit, flooding, national policy on honesty and integrity, compliance to building code and emergency, Ghana's brand position and immigration.
Okay, I'll answer in the order of medicine. Somebody asked about blockchain technology. And I would like to link that to the lady who spoke about data. The government of Ghana has embarked an aggressive digitalization project where we are thinking that we should remove as much human intervention and allow a lot of, you know, interaction using computerized systems. So we are doing the national database, which is biometrically registering everybody in Ghana. We have the land to register and land addressing thing, where every five by five meter grid in Ghana has a digital address that will help us finding addresses, like the codes that you have here. We have the e-registry at the registrar's house. Now we have a paperless port, we are doing e-law, where you can actually get your cases.
Is that what?
E-law, yes. But the important thing is that the Ministry of Communications is putting together a framework where blockchain will be used in a lot more interventions than they have been before. Because you all know blockchain technology allows artificial intelligence to work more constructively. And indeed, because of our advancement in that area in Africa, Google have opened their AI research center in Ghana. So it's a program that is going on, and constructively and dynamically, we are seeing a lot of state agencies computerize the activities so that the engagement between the state and the citizen is sufficient. And of course, also eliminates a good deal of corruption because you can't bribe your mobile phone and computer, you can't bribe a person. So if you remove the person, you have to actually run the system as well. So we are on the giant GIP, very soon we'll put out there. We are actually doing a workshop on blockchain technology and artificial intelligence. Now you can invest in that to improve their country. Because that's where the world is going. So we are not left out in here. Now, the question of what GIPC is doing? It's a very interesting question, because my duty as head of GIP is twofold. First is to brand market Ghana as a country. And then also sell our investments that we have, raise foreign direct investments, partner with the Ministry of Finance and the other agencies to bring investment into Ghana. Of course, we do understand that even with the best of the businesses of agriculture that needs, we need investments in the country. And the gentleman has what we are doing, we've done pretty much, a lot. In 2016, when we took over total FDI that Ghana attracted, it was $2.4 billion. Through strategic marketing and better processes. In 2017, our FDI went up to $4.9 billion. Last year, it came down to $3.5 billion. But of course, global FDI, lot of 1.3 to 1.2, so we are actually on track. To the extent that I just came back from Dubai, where GIPC was awarded the best investment promotion agency in Africa. Just two days before, an annual investment meeting, where once again I won the best investment promotion agency in Western and Central Africa. So at least we are encouraged that we are doing some, we are doing a little bit more than we have. The strategy now is to go to strategic investments, which enable us to achieve the sustainable development goals. And I'm sure most of you might know the 17 goals that we want to achieve. Growing health, education, poverty, and creation, all that. So that is where we are going, targeting specific investments, which are priority sectors for the economy. We are working on that. And we work through the missions as well. And I'll tell you something very interesting. In the last quarter, more than half of the investors who came to our offices were brought in by people in the diaspora. And to add to that, the office of the presidency has set up the office of the diaspora to also try and coordinate and attract more diasporans to come in there. Well, you say it's not working, but we have to keep acting, because we should stop it. If you just improve it, and make it more, you know, effective. And by that, we worked through a lot of the missions to make sure that they get to know the people. And on the lighter side, I asked one of the ambassadors that, give us a list of our people. They said, oh, we know our people, but when you tell them to give us our details, their details, they tell you it's okay. But we can assure you that we want to partner you to do the right things. If you want to come back, you have to settle the business, we will facilitate that. GIPC, we are not necessarily color sensitive or country sensitive. We want investments into Ghana, whether it's indigenous or foreign. In fact, when foreign direct investment comes, we want it to partner domestic direct investment. Thank you.
So access to credit, access to credit, flooding, national policy on honesty and integrity, compliance relating to building and maintenance.
Access to credits is a major, a major issue that has been, we have been dealing with in the country for a very long time. Especially in the area of agriculture and maybe in manufacturing. But I'm sure recently we have heard that, you know, we are sanitizing the banking sector. Some banks have been, yes, their licenses have been withdrawn, others have been banned, and so on and so forth. Reducing the number of banks from, I think, 27 to about 23 or something like that. You know, all was aimed at trying to make sure that the capital of these banks can be, you know, big enough for them to actually extend credit to people. Let me tell you that, you know, usually, when even Cocoa Marketing Board, Cocoa Board, was to go and borrow money to really come and buy cocoa. They always syndicate from outside. Because our banks are very, very small banks that cannot give enough credit to Cocoa Board to do that. So one of the reasons why this sanitization of the bank went on is to make sure that the banks are very strong enough to be able to give credit to people to invest. And more importantly, in agriculture. You see, in agriculture, the risks are minimal. Most of our farms are based on, I mean, rain-fed agriculture. And if it rains well, you get, you reap whatever that you've got. If it doesn't rain well, you have a rock. Banks really don't write, don't try to give credit when there are, it's very risky. So what we have decided to do is to find a way to de-risk these operations. So currently, in fact, we have actually created an institution where they will actually ensure agricultural operations so that, you know, that risk is taken away from that. That is the only way that we can actually allow, I mean, get banks to really give credit to companies in agriculture. And it has actually gone through parliament already, and we have a house and institution that is going to do that so that, you know, these risks are removed and credits are made available. So we are working on it to make sure, we are aware of the difficulty in creating, people having access to credit, and that is what we are working on at the medium term, medium level type of operations of government. And of course, at the lower levels, we have the Maslock that gives small, small credit to farmers and to really peasant farmers and to market women and to other people who do not have access to credit. So we've been working very hard on it, we know that credit is actually a major stumbling block in terms of our, 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 our block. But you see, this gentleman asked a question about whether we have been thinking through about, maybe if we have any plan for regard to people's integrity and things like that. You know what the President has been talking about with Ghana Beyond Meat? What he is trying to say is that, the attitude of Ghanaians needs to change. And in fact, he's trying to have a combat with people, the society, I mean, with government and the private sector and individuals in the society. We should change our attitudes towards it. For instance, our attitude towards work. I mean, a lot of us here, when we are here, we work very, very hard. When we are back home, we don't seem to be working as hard as we should. But our attitude towards work should change. Our attitude towards time should change. If we have to be there at 6 o'clock, we have to be here if it's 6 o'clock and go to the dog or mother, 6:30, you are out. But Ghana, it is not like that. 6:30, 6 o'clock, and you come myself. See, your attitude and behavior is like that. We need to find a way to really go further. And to put attitudes towards, maybe, safety, for instance. We are not a country of people who save a lot. We actually consume here and now. We have to change that attitude. So we also have to find a way to really, you see, look. A lot of us believe, and this one, I said it in Nigeria, and there was a lot. Look, if you are a politician like me, expectation is that I should be a rich man, isn't it? Why would you do that? And that is the behavior, that is the attitude of Ghanaians. You see, and that is where the gentleman is coming to, and that is what the President is saying. We should, nobody should be seen as, maybe, as, because of your position, you should be doing that. If you put that pressure on the politician, that is where that is honesty comes in. So I think our charter, which is going to be ready by the end of May, by the middle of May, some of these active issues will all come up. But it was, is one of the people who engineered that charter. So this charter talks about, some of these things that will actually help people to change their attitude towards certain things. And of course, towards what that gentleman gave to talk about. The perennial floods in the country, I am sure you are very right. In fact, the Minister for Water and Housing has been charged with that responsibility. It is not a question of rushing through and then making some storms, making some congress here and there. He is actually setting up a hydraulic authority that will actually understand the forces of all these floods. Because you actually use the very direct word, it's perennial. It happens every year. So if you go and desalt once, it will come back. So this authority is actually charged with the responsibility to find a solution, a permanent solution to that. So he's actually working on it, and it's likely that we will solve that problem. You know, we have some difficulty like that in the north. Each time that the Bagri Dam is open, there's flood all over the place. And in fact, the President has charged the minister and all of our, all the ministers to make sure that this year, the Bagri Dam, I'm sure you know where the Bagri Dam is located. I mean, the, 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 the King of Us, you know, is open, the whole country is flooded. So this time around, and in fact, he's actually used the military and all the forces that he has, we have in the country to ensure that there is no overflow. And when there's a spew over, it doesn't actually flood the whole country. So we are really very conscious of some of these things that you are also conscious of, and we are trying to find solutions to some of them. So thank you very much.
Sorry, the gentleman who asked about the PR, the Ghana PR. It may interest you to know that we are close to engaging with some international companies to give us more profile than we have. Bloomberg is one. We are still discussing CNN. I'm sure you see some countries that is flash on CNN. We will do this thing. We are talking to Qatar Airlines, who have approached us, says that they put a Ghana video on their screens for people traveling to Asia and Africa of Sengana. We are talking to British Airways, we are talking to the Emirates. So that is all part of the agenda to give us better profile and do a good business.
Two questions from the people who submitted questions. I've gone through the questions, and the three, one is sanitation, and then the second one is road accidents relating to dual carriageways. People are asking, what are you thinking about breaking major cities with dual carriageways? And then, and then.
Is that a friendly, impressive question?
Oh, and then lastly, someone asked about immigration, it was part of the, someone asked a question.
9:15.
Good evening, it's Sunday, and I think, so if we could all be a little attentive, then we will, we will close. I think a few of us have to drive to New York tonight, so. But thank you really very much for coming. These are very important learning experiences for us as we do. I appreciate all your concerns. Infrastructure is not a cheap thing. And we need to somehow manage our resources to be able to do that. So we are thinking a lot more of tolling, et cetera, for the financing of some of our infrastructure works. So roads, as Senior Minister mentioned, the Sino-Hero transaction is $2 billion. Off bridges, roads, interchanges, et cetera, that are, I think the President can this sort for Tamale on Wednesday or something. And it's going to follow through throughout the next 18 months consistently. Sanitation is also one of those important areas that we are targeting. I know that we've agreed to about $300 million to be able to begin to tackle the sanitation problem, especially in greater, greater Africa. So those who have, are being, are being looked at. There was a question from Irene, I think, on the Dens and Diaspora, which you have to answer. I guess, I mean, Aspro Dambapo mentioned, he lived here and came back home. And so did I. But I think it takes quite a bit of sacrifice. And sometimes, at some point, I remember going home with my, now my wife, and she might have been the third PhD in clinical psychology. But it took the university maybe six months before she got her appointment. And it's very easy to give up and go home, go back to where you came from. But I mean, I think one really needs to ask oneself whether one wants to give back to the country or not. And make a, I had to make a determination that nobody was going to drive me out of Ghana, irrespective, whether it's government or the individual, et cetera. And that's your own personal commitment. And it may be very painful and difficult because you feel deeply you are bringing a resource to your country, and you are feeling rejected. But it's not about that person rejecting you. It's about you determining whether you want to. So we went back, and I think we wanted to start an investment bank. And guess where we got our first, our first office space in Cantamangue? How did we give an investment bank in front of Cantamangue? But we were committed to it, and we figured, you know, we've seen firms grow in New York, and it started in weird ways. So 20 years later, the bank will become the main investment bank, all sorts of things that happened. And it's unfortunate because you may want to receive a red carpet, but, you know, it's you deciding to give to your country or not. And I didn't ask to be. So we've been back some 20 years, three kids later, and I love that child, nice marriage. So I think really, you know, and even as we, as we have these town hall discussions, I don't think it's an issue of anger really. There must be some frustrations here and there. But clearly, there's more you can do than you are doing. And people give in various ways. You know, people support their families at home, people bring investees to come, people move, all of that, going to make the diaspora experience, which we have to appreciate as a country. And with the frustrations of coming home, you know, are legendary, everybody has their story. But you move back, and then five years later, you say, you know, if I had stuck through it, it might have been. Because the first two, three years, I can assure you, are not great. But it's your country, and it's a beautiful country, so let's, let's do that. And I think really, we have a chance at this point. It seems to be a new recalibration of where we want to go. There's a new commitment. Our stock is very high, the flag is flying. And so, inasmuch as we may not like everything we see, I think there's a lot more you can do. So inasmuch as we feel like everything we see, I think there's a lot more you have to give and maybe we can give you. And it's your, it's your decision actually to come home. And for us, you know, if you run into us, we will try to help, to facilitate that. But it does not mean that everybody will help. And so your urge, your inner belief to come back will be more important. On the issue of a national policy on integrity, it is important because sometimes you really see a lot of gray where people are not clear what is right and what is wrong. But the more of a critical mass of diasporans that come, the more you influence their states. You know, so you have a place like Ashes University where exams are taken without teachers, okay? Just so that there's personal integrity that is being built. So you begin to see these kind of thousand points of lights of excellence, you know, popping up from different places. And then you represent, you know, the possibility of those points of excellence if you take the risk to come, to come home. So we will continue to keep faith, we'll continue to try and change the way in which we do this, we'll continue to manage the economy as best, you know, as we can and we'll continue to make you feel proud as you walk around, even as you are angry over us, knowing that Ghana is doing much, much better than it used to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Minister. I think there was a question on immigration, but I'll leave it to immigration. In terms of people coming into Ghana.
Well, as far as immigration is concerned, personally, I do believe that we have one of the most poorest borders that any country could ever have. So what we need to do, that, we cannot afford a war. I would tell you that there's a lot we can do about it and I'm quite sure that the appropriate time will do it and maybe this is the appropriate time. I took the floor basically to thank all of you for coming and also to mention, now that I have you, I have a couple of requests to make from the questions and the comments this evening. There is obviously in this room a serious pool of talent, a serious pillar of commitment and of course, a certain amount of capacity that your country needs. And I would want to believe that you, in your tent, would want to give these qualities. The problem that I have, because I suspect that ninety-five percent of you don't have any information of yourselves at this embassy. So if, for instance, I get an inquiry and I do get inquiries a lot of the times, then maybe we need somebody who could either do this or be able to help think about this. We don't have anybody who can tackle it. So I would want to appeal to you this evening that if you haven't answered, please register with the embassy. Secondly, this is what Ghana has called the Year of Pretend. And therefore, there are lots of activities going to go on in this country and in Ghana in connection with the four hundred and, so the first black sleeve starting to this country. I would want to hope that all of you could encourage your friends, if not yourselves, to visit Ghana. And when you go to Ghana, please spend some money. Spend a lot of money so that at least there will be an injection of a bit of capital to be found. So please, try and visit Ghana at least this year. From what? It is that have been said from the press for this evening. One can only conclude. And before that, I mentioned, and I was going to skip it because I was trying to answer this, I mentioned, that mission of going home. Home is where you go and they have to take you in. And therefore, you don't need any encouragement from anybody to go home. Sometimes people ask it as if if they went home, it constitutes a favor that they are doing in their own country and it shouldn't be so. So please, do go home because even if you are super comfortable in this country, I can assure you that there is not much comfort sitting on somebody else's front porch and watch your house burn. Because after the fire is out and all you've got are the ashes, the owner of the front porch might walk up to you and ask you, when are you going home? When he knows that you have no home to go to. So please go home with a bit of happiness in your heart, a bit of step in your gate so that your country will feel proud that you came and you will feel proud that you went back to the country. That one, please consider seriously. From what has been said, I can only conclude. And that conclusion I've always had, that the government basically is trying to do things in such a way that at least every single Ghanaian at a certain point could tell himself or herself that there is hope for him. And in fact, for some people, hope may well be the only thing they've got and they would want to hold tightly onto it. It is our charge, it is our responsibility, it ought to be our, as you were, responsibility that we help the government hold onto whatever activity that is being done to sustain that hope for all of us. I've mentioned before and I would want to mention it to you, that Ghana is one big diamond. Every debt, we need to wash it, we need to polish it and we need to use it wisely. And even in this town, with all the fights that we are having with some people in the administration, Ghana has become a poster boy for Africa. We want to keep in that. So please, as in the way that Ghanaians, a group of Ghanaians, let us all decide that that is the one country we own, that is the one country we have and that is the one country which is supported and that is the one country which is older as an example, if not for the world, at least for the African continent. May I thank you, gentlemen, for coming and giving us reasons to be happy. And again, I would want to thank all of you for investing your attention this evening. But then, I'd like to say...